Do you want to know if these things were nice?
They are nice. I really like my.
And you can live in it.
I'll tell you. Bought that before I got out of fixed income. I wouldn't be able to have one now.
There's kind of a program out there for that. Technology for the.
Fixing, yeah. Covid relief. I should probably put it for that.
All right, seven marks. So push set. Everybody we're all just start with pleas and allegiance.
Alleged allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello.
Mr. Monahan.
How are you doing, Jerry?
Good, how are you all?
I'm hanging in there.
Good, good. All right, we're ready to start our call.
All righty.
Okay, Mayor Minney.
Here.
Brenneman.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
Monahan.
Here.
O'Hara.
Here.
Randall.
Here.
And Jones.
Here.
All right, we have a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion second. Randall.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Brenneman.
Yep.
Jones.
Yes.
And Monahan.
Yep.
All right, we have a motion for four minutes. We have two sets. One set.
Motion approved in minutes of regular meeting December 15, 2020.
Second.
Discussion. Oh, Jones.
Yes.
Brenneman.
Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
And Randall.
Yes.
Motion approved, so special meeting December 21.
I'll take one second though, I forgot Monahan. Monahan on first motion?
Yep.
All right. All right, we have a motion on 1221.
Correct. Second.
Okay, discussion. All right. Keel.
Yes.
O'Hara.
Yes.
Randall.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Brenneman.
Yeah.
And Monahan.
Yep.
And motion to approve any bills. We don't have any others out there. Just up there. We'll take down any public input on any non-agenda items. Public input on any non-agenda items? Yes. Yes, would you like to?
Sure.
Okay, good.
Flipped open our South Dakota Municipality magazine here and flipped over to the page in the 2021 municipal election calendars. And it looks like we've got only three dates available to us in 2021. And the thing that jumped out at me there was that the school may request to combine with you on any of these dates. So my suggestion would be that we look into facilitating that.
We did have that discussion with Christie about a month ago, asking about that.
There you go.
I said we usually, in our ordinance we have that we have in April and we usually have in June. We had a little discussion. She thought April would be a little too soon for them, so they decided they would just run it on their own. The other thing that comes into play with the city and the school is their district's larger than just the city, so you know, it helps for them to have the different polling places rather than just here, but we did have that discussion a month ago.
There you go.
Yeah.
There was no. Oh, I just don't know how to phrase that. Is there any worth in moving, changing our ordinance to make it possible to have an election in June?
You know, the really, the only thing it helps is it's convenient for the residents just to come one time, but we have to do all our separate publications. We have to, you know, do all our separate ballots. We, so expense wise, I mean, there's no saving there or whatnot. Like I said, you know, the resident only has to come out once, but like I said, sometimes I get a little confused of where the polling place is when the school has, you know.
Those are different from cities.
Mm-hmm. So I mean, it's something we can look into if you guys want to, but.
Okay.
Yeah. So, yeah, we can pursue further. The only one I ever talked to was Christie, the business.
Sure.
You know, officer.
Yeah, so. I'll flip this over.
Yeah.
We went to June though, we fight to also change, isn't our start date for council?
Like I say, you have to change your terms. I mean, there's, there's a few things in our ordinance that we would have to change.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we do have, we'd have to look through all, because there's a few places of where the start and set time is of everything, but you know, it's something you want to look at entertaining, yeah.
Well, how much time before, obviously we've got a couple of months to consider those.
Well, she's got some publication dates that are coming up real soon. Yeah, I don't have my election calendar here, but. But in January, already. January, we gotta set the date, so.
Oh, sure.
I don't.
As well, we're in January.
I think we can still set it in the second meeting, but I think we have to have by January, set the date.
Set the date, no later than noon.
We'll be able to change ordinances. I don't think we'd be able to change ordinances this going around. I mean, by next year. Okay.
Published notice of vacancies and time and place filing petitions by January 15th and 30th.
Sure.
That's an interesting comment.
I mean, before, now, and the next one, I could look, see what ordinances would affect it and, and we can have that discussion before, you know.
I'm not trying to spend any more time on council than I need to.
Yeah, I'll see what we're gonna take though.
All right. Good deal. Any other public comment? All right, move to our seven and five hearing. We've got renewal of city garbage license for Novak Sanitary Service, custom sanitation RBS, and votes. Questions or motions on this?
Any concerns with tonnage, truck size, anything like that, Craig?
We haven't, we looked into the ordinances quite a few years ago and changed some of that stuff to match up with the.
Show violations?
Nothing, no. We haven't pulled trucks for a long time. For a while, we were pulling some off the side and having them weigh, but we haven't had any issues with them.
Make motion to approve for re-licence renewals as submitted. Second.
Discussion. Your name? Hope, Brenneman?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
And Monahan?
Yep.
Okay. We're at quite the seven and ten, so we're gonna jump down to the second reading of ordinance 699. The zoning definition. Second reading.
No changes.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 699, second reading.
Second.
Discussion. Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yeah.
And Monahan?
Yep.
Hey, well, we're gonna. We'll close it down for this one 20 seconds here. We're gonna do a seven and ten reading. Okay, somebody come rushing in the door. Lots of talk about it. All right, seven and ten. Got the first reading of ordinance 698, the zoning amendment for off-street parking. This is the one that came, came back from Biden zoning.
Yeah, so about a month and a half ago, you know, this came before you guys. It's a change in our off-street parking regulations and in there, under section B2, it talks about how wide a driveway can be in the city boulevard area. And our current regulations now basically state that within the boulevard area, and that's from the property line to the street, they can only be, driveways can only be 36 foot wide unless you're a commercial business expecting semi-traffic, but the, you know, normal for a residential is 36 feet wide. P and Z had some discussion about this ordinance. The issue that we're finding or that some of the residents have problems with is that, you know, where the sidewalk is, there's usually, especially in all the new developments, there is one foot from the sidewalk to the property line. So, you know, following our current ordinance, there's always that foot strip in there that kind of was a wonky area that was, you'd have to have grass or gravel in there, you know. And then once you hit the property line, you could fan it out, you know, as wide as you wanted to be. So P and Z discussed that they would like to change the ordinance to allow driveways to be, you know, basically as wide as the home or want it, as wide as their garage, down to the sidewalk and then after the sidewalk, you know, between the sidewalk and the street, that area in the boulevard can only be 36 foot wide. You guys briefly looked at it at that time, we said maybe try to discuss a little bit. There are some properties in town that it, you know, their boulevard area is smaller than the normal area, their right-of-way shift a little bit, and some of them have sidewalks right along the street, so in essence, those properties could have, you know, 40, 45 foot drive it all the way down to the street. Went back to P and Z, you guys sent it back there, they discussed it again, and they still, you know, they reworded the wording a little bit to try and make it clearer, but basically they came back with the same suggestion from on the house side of the sidewalk, let them be, you know, wider, but then after the sidewalk, between that and the street, 36 foot. They kind of came down to, and as he sees here with P and Z, can kind of talk about a little bit more, and I think Levon and Arden were there during this discussion, but it really affects a few properties within town in the older part. You know, most of, most of the properties, this won't be an issue with changing, especially won't be, affect any of the newer properties in town, but just affect those few places and P and Z was comfortable with, you know, moving ahead with this change. Craig was present as well during the discussion and they are still presenting it as they would like to be able to change that, that driveway width can be wider in the boulevard area up to the sidewalk, and then after the sidewalk, they have to be 36 feet. Left wording in there that if there is no sidewalk, that it's still the property line, just like it is now. Tried to put a couple of little drawings in there. You did a good job. Draw. No, you did a good job. Better than I would have done.
Please just say there's just a very few properties at this site actually would have the opportunity to put a wide, super wide driveway at the end of them. Most, we've only got a few that have sidewalks up to the curb. There's only a handful of places that would be within a foot or two of the curb, so. All the new developments have got their standards with the sidewalk and they can't change placement unless they go through here.
Yeah, it's one of those things where it seems like you gotta set it for, for the vast majority and, and what's coming in basically, and that you probably can't make it work for every single property that's already in town.
Yeah. I recall that maybe we were here, part of this discussion is, we've told people that they cannot park on the grass. I mean, so we've really started the city down this path that once they get past that sidewalk, they want to go as wide as they possibly can because they need to have everything parked on.
Concrete or.
On concrete.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we really created that.
They want wide and wide driveways for parking pads and.
Right. Right.
Definitely.
So up to the sidewalk, they can be wider than 36?
Right.
But the sidewalk, but the driveway opening touching the sidewalk and the street can only be 36?
36.
Right.
And it's still six foot flare, right, three on each side?
Yeah, yeah, and that didn't change at all the flare.
Right.
That's what we have now. So it still allows for some boulevard area, you know, narrowing it down to 36 on the street side, still allows for boulevard area for snow removal or storage. Yeah, I can tell you about a number of properties in Sioux Falls that there's nowhere to put the snow because they don't have this in place, or they didn't have this in place, I should say.
Sure.
And there's just nowhere to put it.
One foot.
Yeah.
And run out of space.
And then when, yeah, you know, falling snow.
So while the visual on the properties, the typical sidewalk placement, one foot off the property line, doesn't really show a 42 foot wide driveway, but in an instance where that would be allowable to the sidewalk, and then you have a 36 foot wide driveway with a three-footed flare on each side, basically 42 feet, who's responsible for ensuring that at some point in the future, the property owner doesn't spill those little triangles and make the whole thing 42 feet wide?
We drove around.
I'd say that, I think we've already had some instances like that. I mean, it's.
People had done some work at night.
Sure.
We've noticed there's driveways one color and additions another color, so it's been added.
Not the Saturday afternoons.
Yeah.
Motion to approve ordinance 698. Second.
All right, any further discussion? O'Hara?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Jones?
Yeah.
Brenneman?
Yeah.
And Monahan?
Yep.
All right, sounds good. Thank you. Thanks for working on that with you. All right, we'll move to reports. Deputy Paris.
So we started wrapping up in the year. It's been, numbers are a little down, but we're still averaging about eight calls for service per day here in Hartford. I can tell you those water storms that we had were brutal, so it wasn't very fun dealing with that. This is probably the first kickoff of the winter that was really tough, so. So, yeah, we've got averaging about a call for service. Traffic stops are slowed down. We've got 94 stops with 14 citations, 39 of them were written warnings, and then 10 of them were verbal warnings along with the water storms that we had. We had 10 snowbirds, is what we call for parking violations to people who don't move their vehicles off the road when there's a snow alert. We had a couple of parking complaints that were handled. The sheriff's office landlines, we had 14, so that's just a lot of people calling in with questions or whatever if they wanted to determine if, you know, they want to go forward with like a report or kind of keep us in the loop of things kind of thing, so. Suspicious vehicles, we had five, and then one suspicious activity. And then, I don't know why, can't remember what it was from last month, but this, here in Hartford, we had 11 case reports done, so a lot of writing for me, so that's kind of how our December wrapped up, and as we go into 2021, just kind of just my goal to, for you guys, just the wrong same thing is just continue to do what we're doing and just making good contacts with the public and building, I would say that building relationships, I was talking with Rhonda today, just the relationships I've built here so far have been really, just been really good and really positive, been really good. Outcomes have been coming from it as well too, so I'm pretty thrilled and just want to continue to build those positive relationships and strong relationships within this community, so. That's notable. Is there any questions or comments or concerns for you guys?
I had the November one pulled up here. It looks like you had 18 case reports in November.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, maybe not as much.
It's, it's nice, just looking back at November, it was an increase or decrease. So I'm sure it's probably not worked for you.
No, I totally, I switched cars, and so I didn't have November's to compare.
Gotcha.
And so this, this was just, oh man, I need to figure this out, so eventually we'll get it all, everything back to where it was originally, so.
Sounds great.
My bad.
No worries.
Cool.
No, I think Jones mentioned this at the last meeting or the other one, but you think the relationship setting must be going well because we don't hear, I think we've just been hearing positive comments about law enforcement. Haven't heard anything, any negative comments about law enforcement.
A few of them out there on Facebook, but they don't have the courage to come here and complain to us, so.
You complain about anything on Facebook.
That's a fact. And we really are not getting the, I mean, I'm not, I mean, we're just not going to bulk out like we want. Couple years ago.
Cool, well, keep up the good work then.
Your arm sore?
It must be, it must be the vaccine then.
The bot right knows a good surgeon, maybe.
It's gotta be the vaccines.
Wow.
All right, looks good. Thank you. Keep up the good work. All right, Mitch, we've got our report.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Council. Just want to start off by thanking you folks for your selection of an unwasteful airplane. Just can't tell you how excited we are to be able to move forward with that project, you folks, and just from our company and everything, just really, really appreciate the opportunity to get your comeouts here, so. We had a meeting with the mayor and staff to start the scoping process, so we've got a clear and defined scoping board with. So our goal is to get a contract back to you guys so you can have it at your next meeting, so you can consider that and hopefully we can put the project off the ground and make some progress, so. Anyway, I just really wanted to just express our thanks to you guys, and I really don't have anything beyond Ninety Street, which we're going to talk about in executive session later. But is there any questions for me, I can sure, the FBI answer?
No, we're looking forward to moving forward on this. I know it's been, it's been a it's been a big process for, for all of this to happen and get through, and I feel like we made a lot of great steps and I'm just looking forward to moving forward with this project, and I do.
Great. Okay, thanks again for that.
All right. With that, Mayor Minney, hold your character for it.
Just a few things changed across the night. We do have them all up and running right now. There's a couple that over a period of time, they've shut down and got diagnosed down to, it's called the sun savers in them that works off the solar panels, and I got them on order. They should be here that Friday. We're gonna put them. Otherwise, they are, they'll, they'll run for two weeks, two months, just depends if then they shut down, so we're gonna mirror down to that's where it is, so we're definitely placing done. Otherwise, decorations, you know, everything's been put away, wrapped up, ready for complete snow removal in spring. And the other things, just thanks for the Christmas cash bonus, I'm nice, so. That's all I got. Let's see what these guys have for me.
Good job with the snow removal and all of that.
Got Jessica in the bar to see if we're getting nice enough, so give me some things that are coming through tonight.
Coming through tonight.
Still a comment on the training. I think that's great. Not necessarily a suggestion of the insurance company, but a good preventative, almost pre, yeah, I mean. What's, what's our mod rate on the city?
I'd have to look for, it is pretty low.
Probably so.
Yes. Yeah, I'd have to look it up for sure with you, but it is very low, we're on the low side. We have very few work. Yeah, not.
When's the last time the city had a lost time injury?
Three years ago. We did it the last two years.
Okay.
So there wasn't, that was a, was a time loss, so.
Not a lost time injury, probably.
I think it's.
That's good.
I don't know.
It's gonna be accidents, but it's almost about lost time accidents.
Part of the last was, I think I, probably the early. July, it was four years ago.
Four years ago, so, yeah.
Was that from the Christmas bonus?
Yeah. Yeah.
Trying to hold it down.
Wow, that's good, thanks.
We are unfortunate.
Yeah, we're gonna try to do it every couple of weeks, just give us time to sit down together and.
Craig's also moving ahead with getting the guys, when you can, lining up training for, you know, their certificates, you know, the spraying and moving ahead with their water, wastewater certificates too, so a lot of that's online now too, so.
Yep.
That's good. Sounds good.
All right, nothing else for Craig? Thank you, Craig. All right, move to Karen's report.
Yeah, I don't have anything to add, and then just the one action item to set the election date.
We got a question on the revenue. On the, is that year to date? So we're up considerable about $500,000 in revenue year to date. That's not any loans that came in, that's just our tax revenues up that much.
That's total revenue, right?
The year to date for 2020?
Yeah, we're at 2.2 in 19, or 2.3, you know, we're in 2.8 this year. I just wanted to add. More money?
You, that's total for the general fund, right? Well, our sales tax, I would say our sales tax.
That's what I'm asking. There's kind of like loan proceeds that are in there that would make that number.
Be any one. Dude, that one came in last year, right? Ninety Street and Menwer, oh, that many came in last year, right?
Yeah, I don't have the revenue.
The biggest area that's gonna be sold, but we're up on building permits, I mean, yeah, we, our revenue, we were up on a few things.
Yeah.
So all of it helped.
So real estate taxes, 108, those are the link that was, we just got them?
Yeah, that was.
Does it take a while for the?
It takes about another month for the counting process, and then, yeah. Works, you know, if they're due, we get them about a month later, a week, yeah. Before we get our week check.
We need a motion then to approve the April 13th election. Motion to approve a 2020 election for, yes, down yet, April 13th. Second.
All right, discussion.
Both motion, Jerry?
Motion was to set the municipal election date for April 13, 2021.
Okay.
All right, no further discussion. The vote. Keel?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yeah.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Jones?
Yeah.
Randall?
Yes.
And Monahan?
Yep.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Karen. And then we'll reduce his report.
Nothing too much to add, just with the COVID grant funds, everything got submitted by the end of the year, except for payroll for the sheriff's department. We won't, Sioux Falls has got to sign off on it and give it to us, but we have to the end of January actually to submit that. So that'll get submitted this month, but everything else got put in. As you know, with the second stimulus package, there's talk about dispersing more money to cities and counties. We don't know that dollar amount yet or whatnot, but we'll keep you posted. Secoc's keeping an eye on that, but it sounds like we may have additional funds to use through next year. So hopefully that was nice to have that there. And then an update on the CEDD applications. Sent them all out to the committee, just waiting for a couple members to see when we can meet. Hopefully within the next week or two, we can get a date set up for that and then review the applications we have. And then hopefully move forward with the interviewing process so we can find and get somebody hired to get going in that position. And then the other two things I just wanted to mention, yep, building permits are up this year for pretty good. So that was kind of nice. And we had a hundred and fifty-three building permits. We usually average a little over a hundred. And that's not counting any sheds, fences, flat work, you know, that's all on top of it. And there were lots of them as well this year. So a lot of nice bigger homes too, so that, as you can see, we got a little over about ten and a half million valuation. So that helps. It'll help make sure with the tax revenue, we get it on the roll books and, and the A store too, that was a good valuation. And then also sales tax, we were kind of worried when COVID first hit, you know, we weren't really sure with businesses shutting down, how that would affect. But actually, and then I don't know, and we talked a little bit when our city groups about it. If it's just more hometown spending less spurred, which is great, hopefully that's the deal. But our, our first, second and third penny all increased. So hopefully that's a spending trend, that people are spending the money here and hopefully that continues. So, so all in all, the big worries are actually, we end up here pretty good. Yeah, so hopefully it continues.
Yeah, we've been happy with those numbers and kind of normal here.
Right, exactly.
All right, any questions for Teresa? All right, thank you. All right, we whole business, we have the appointment for the HADF Division Twenty Twenty Five Advisory Board. It's actually at last, yeah, it was last regular meeting and so we had discussion on this. And yep, sound like, you know, our coming back to the boards, they didn't see any, any worrying conflict there. So, so with that, I'd like to appoint Mark O'Hara to the Division Twenty Five Advisory Board. This will be one of those appointments too, I just want to make sure that kind of stay down there too, that, that we'll, we'll look at every year, kind of like we do with the rest of our appointments. I think we should probably just put it on the schedule, not to say that Mark wouldn't get the appointment next year, but want to make sure that we, that it comes up on our calendar every year to make sure we've got somebody in there. And if it's time to move it around or anything like that, that we do it. But also with that, I would like to discuss, discuss pay for these kinds of, these kinds of boards and that kind of thing. We, we talked about it a little bit before and it's not something we've typically done that much of, at least not over the last few years. But I just wanted to have a little bit of an open discussion on that and, and what's appropriate and what, what are, what it allows for basically. If you should have meeting payment for, for representing the city on those kinds of boards.
Our policy that we have in place that we adopted a few years ago was if any board member got assigned to a different board or whatnot and the council wanted to pay him for that, it would take the vote of the council to approve that payment. That's what our policy says in place, so.
Because I wonder a little bit, Travis, we had Travis kind of appointed to the Sioux Valley Energy Board and they pay that board, I'm trying to remember what that dollar amount was, do you remember what that is per meeting?
A line of forty dollars or something, yeah.
Oh gee, that's pretty good pay.
Yeah, you talked about that one really quick. But I just want to open it up for discussion to see what's appropriate there. These are definitely places where, where we need city representation. So I've always been very good at, at bringing those up. Some of those boards have been kind of volunteer type things. I shouldn't say board, but when we talked about sports and rent committee liaisons before, it's kind of come up and, and I just don't want to overlook it before we, before we make this appointment, so.
Well, I think if the pay is justified for Mark. Well, how often does that meet, you know?
I think once a quarter.
I said, that's what they were talking about to start off meeting, once a quarter?
Yes, kind of we started, and it'll probably be less as the, might be less as the campaign goes on.
What's normal meeting pay, um, normal council meeting pay for a council member?
Regular meetings is a hundred dollars. Special meetings are seventy-five, yeah.
That may be just as a starting point anywhere.
I was gonna say, if we had any ideas, what other communities have done, that kind of thing. Be something to think of too.
Yeah, I think in the, it seems like I recall in the past, I think it was a prior, prior administrations, when they had people go into fire department meeting, some of those things. It seemed to me like it was special meeting pay.
I guess, like when we used to have meetings set up and two people assigned to them, they got a special meeting pay, yeah. That's what we've done in the past, yeah.
Sorry, the Sioux Valley deals forty.
Forty, thirty-nine, forty, yeah.
Be really good, bro.
Double my hourly income right there.
Is that right? I think I'm, am I looking at that right? Member of the council should be paid forty dollars per deal, per attendance. Plus mileage, which means you're gonna drive like five hundred miles to get there. I lost again.
Do you have a few more things specific for these, for this meeting or for the advisory council or in general?
Well, we need a motion to appoint Mark to the Missouri Energy Board, motion second approved. And we can, we can discuss pay with that motion or we can bring that up on a future date as well.
Travis, I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Mark O'Hara to the HADF Division Twenty Twenty Five. And then he compensated seventy dollars per meeting.
Okay, got a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll take it for discussion.
Second for discussion.
What was the dollar, what was the dollar amount of motion, seventy?
Seven zero. Yep.
How much do we get for special meeting pay? Don't we get seventy-five?
Yeah, oh, I thought it was seventy.
Seventy-five.
Yep, that's correct, Mark.
And how much for regular meeting pay?
Hundred.
One hundred, yep.
One hundred.
I misunderstood. I thought it was seventy, otherwise I'd have made it seventy-five.
Just, just my opinion, if this was gonna be a, if this was gonna be a once a month meeting, I think, I think special meeting pay would suffice. But if it's quarterly, I'd expect the meetings will be longer. So I guess I, I'd like to see it at least regular meeting pay.
Sure.
And then based on that, we would deal on, deal with these on an individual basis, I would assume, right?
Correct.
Yeah, as we have these.
As we have these. How often is your Missouri Energy?
Yeah, I'm in details now. Just looking for all the, every other week, I think. So welcome back, isn't it?
Right. We may need to revisit, not to get too off topic, but we may need to revisit that if we're doing these kind of things here too. It's not on the agenda today, so we maybe have to add that, but we may even do some research and revisit that as well.
What about if we just make a motion to have Mark beyond the HADF, but not say anything about, about the pay right now? How do you all feel about that?
Can I amend my motion?
Sure.
I wish to amend it, change the pay from seventy dollars a meeting to the standard meeting rate at times.
Standard council meeting rate?
So putting raises in here too.
It stays with it. Yep.
Second to that motion.
Okay, motion and second. All right, another discussion. All right. Hold on, Keel?
Yes.
I'll call on you, but I think O'Hara? Yep. Randall?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
And Monahan.
Yes.
All right, thank you for taking that.
I was just gonna amend it, now you gotta vote on the main motion. That was just amended, the pay part, so.
Okay, so that's just.
So now you vote on the motion originally made as amended, so.
As amended?
Yes.
All right. Okay, I'm gonna trust you on that. All right, well, he said we're gonna vote again. So are they voting on, on the amended motion at this one?
Correct, so it'd be the appointment at the regular council rate of pay for time review.
Good, thank you. All right, Keel?
Yes.
O'Hara?
I understand.
Randall?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
And Monahan.
Yep.
All right.
Travis, you were wondering about your deal. Says council member shall meet periodically at the call of the board of directors. It's not specific.
Yep.
For whatever reason, the attachment isn't going up, you know.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we may want to revisit that, take a look at that. Any other, if we've got other appointments out there for, for boards like this that I'm not thinking of right now, let's, let's at least, want to make sure that we're, if we're doing something like that, that we're fair across the board, so. All right, we'll move to new business, discussion of location of Jambeery Street Dance for the twenty twenty-one event.
Hey, guys. We are in our planning status, very early on, but we're on the planning status, so we're praying for a more normal year this year. Fingers crossed. But we are in the discussion of music, band, location, concerns, all those fun things that came out of last year. And one of the things we're looking at is if we could potentially like not do street dance and do more of a Saturday night music in the park than we do Friday night. You have a little bit more room to space out. People really typically don't dance that much at a street dance anyway. If we look at probably closing it down, obviously not going until one, we'd look at more like what we do on a Friday night, have it wrap up a little bit easier or earlier, and then just basically keep everything down in the park. Then we wouldn't be lacking up in the streets other than for the parade. I'm assuming we'd block up still some for the parade, but that would be nothing that would require us to down in this area. And then if they do the big tournament down here too, we might need to work with them as far as what they want to do for, for space, so.
That's true.
Would have left impact on the downtown as far as that, and then also for parking, we could work with the school for more parking too, so. And maybe encourage more people to bring it on the chair and actually enjoy the music versus sitting up picking too.
Would you, do you picture them setting up in the band show area there?
In the amphitheater? Yep, you will look to utilize that one too.
Yep, power's good and it's good enough.
I gotta double check, I see if I picked the, I can't remember, we have a breakers in there, I was gonna do that, chance. I believe it is, I think it's two hundred amp and that, one, two, so, I'll double check.
Two hundred, kind of, in that panel, whatever it is.
It's probably two hundred. I know we did it right, we did it right.
It's not strapped and it's not right, right, but.
It's okay. Um, the only other thing I was thinking about this too is, is there, maybe like the deputy or anybody else, is it darker in the park and more, just darker and more hiding places for nefarious activities? I don't know if that's the right word. But I'm just kind of curious about that, because when you're out on the street, you know, everybody's out in the light open.
Yes and no. If you have a neighbor down the street, he tell you that they think happened in the alleyway in his boat, so it kind of depends on who you ask that question to.
Right.
Nefarious is a wicked or criminal, criminal act, so, yeah, you nailed it.
We do tend to see like on Friday night, when we have music down there, we do just tend to see a little bit different atmosphere. It does take away some of the hard alcohol that you see down here on Saturday night, hoping to keep it more family here versus the stereotypical street dance motion. I mean, we're all at that age, we all know what the stereotypical street dance has been. And this year may have been a blessing in disguise because we got to see some of the things that, with a smaller crowd, some of the things that maybe we missed before by seeing more what was on the street. And some of our concern is glass on our, on the streets. And that falls under our liability as soon as it gets outside of an establishment. If a glass were to get dropped on the street, somebody fall on it, it's not the liability of our event. Where we know as a beer vendor, we only do for our beers, we had the tin cans, so those weren't coming from us, so.
Sure.
And we've seen a couple other issues as well with the, with the shots and that kind of stuff. It just brings a different atmosphere to the street dance. Like again, trying to stay more geared towards the community and making it maybe more family friendly. To like I said, bring a lawn chair and enjoy the music more than come out and just see a dump you can get.
Right, right, yeah, you're probably, you're having a different style on the, it's not, it's not on the street, so.
More of a dance, more of a game.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Perfect answer.
How late would that go?
We were discussing that it would go, I mean, in downtown, we've gone until one, but we don't obviously want to look at that. We want to look at that midnight or so timeframe like we've done in the past on Friday nights. I mean, then if people want to just personally go to the bars, they sure can, but we would hope to have them out of the park by that twelve-thirty nine frame.
Second concern, maybe they'll stop the war, would be the neighbors.
Yeah.
We discussed going around, we wanted to come before you guys first and see if you guys were open to it and then we'd go visit the homeowners, make sure there's no issues there before we proceed.
Yeah, we didn't want to get too far. We're asking more for your blessing versus for forgiveness.
Sure.
I guess it don't matter to me what you do, as long as the neighbors kind of sign off on it.
I mean, because we have neighbors down here that I know that we have as well, so we're gonna have neighbors see the direction.
If everybody around there comes to the council meeting and says, I don't want that music going at midnight, then I'll have to consider not supporting it.
Right.
And we're gonna be selective on our bands. It's not gonna be your heavy metal, your head, like the music. I mean, it's gonna be, I mean, that's one of the things we're looking at is music right now, what bands to look at, so. Like I said, we're here to get you guys' information first and concerns first before we started moving too much farther, so.
If you guys are against it completely, then we wouldn't even entertain it anymore. If you guys are open to it, then we'll go talk to the neighbors and break up and go visit with them and see if there's, they disapprove it strongly. if they disapprove it strongly, we would just shift it back. We don't want to fight with the neighborhood either, try to.
I could certainly give them, absolutely, especially if you go through the effort of, you know, talking to them. I think lighting is a big one, maybe have some light towers there for people to, if they have all that area, if they feel, you know, not safe.
We do have that one that the fire department gave to us, we had that one available, plus, you know, we can always hang some lights through the trees, you know.
Lots of options.
That's good. Yeah, as long as you're checking your boxes, I don't, I don't see that issue.
Like I said, trying to keep it coming back more to a community, I love that.
The atmosphere in the park is nice, so on a Friday night, when you have that, I mean, it's.
Yeah, that's kind of what we're hoping for on Saturday, we do. Do the fire trucks have lights on them, like blue lights? That could help with some of that related issues. So we're here just more to give you guys the information and find out. What you guys are kind of feeling before we move too far ahead with it. Like I said, we're asking for permission, once again.
Yep, yep. And that doesn't change anything for, it's on city property, doesn't change anything for liability or anything like that.
Doesn't matter whether they're down here in the street or in the park.
The parks have to do.
Also, we all follow their overall, yeah.
And for us, as far as like, I know like on January days for the alcohol areas, we tried to open it up a little bit more. Now, because of the fact that you go through multiple locations, now keeping it in the park, we're probably gonna cinch it back down. It also helps probably the deputies a little bit more to see somebody walking down Second Street in the middle of it. You know, they're not going from point A to point B, because we don't have a point A to point B anymore there. So we kind of max that in a little bit too. But that's all I have.
All good?
So I just want to make sure nobody had any objection to it. All right, thank you, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Better recruit Nelson Hill to the doctor.
We just tried to recruit Nelson, trust us. We just gotta get in there, every now and then. Thanks guys, have a good day.
All right, tend to review slash approve job description for the part-time office help.
So this job description, I remember back at budget time, we did put money in the budget for part-time office help. We haven't heard anybody yet, but we would like to, here in the office, move forward with that. We'd like to get somebody hired and in and trained before we get real busy this spring and summer with it. What we had budgeted, suggested budget time is a part-time person, gonna be here Monday through Friday, like from nine to three. So that would be, you know, somebody to work those hours. We budgeted in a rate of sixteen dollars an hour, but I'm suggesting a pay rate fifteen to sixteen, depending who we get in here. We don't want to go over that sixteen, but we put together this job description and mainly this person would be the front office person. They would answer the phones, you know, take care of the walk-in traffic, do the simple things like pet license, the golf cart licensing, direct people, you know, who they need to speak to or where they need to go, they'll be that first contact person. Kind of frees up Rhonda during the day to concentrate more on the water and sewer billing, which is getting more and more with the two systems at hand. And like I said, at budget time, we haven't expanded our office help in fifteen years and we doubled our, our counts and what we're doing, added more permits. So I would like, if you guys reviewed the job description, I would like approval for that to begin advertising for that position if possible.
And you had a, a small test room of this, basically with Amy Seabird this summer when the pool was closed? I mean, did we get to have Amy try some of this?
She never did come in, so we decided to open it before she.
Shortly thereafter.
Because she took a vacation and didn't start right away, and yeah, so we never did have her in the office here, so.
Which.
Yeah, would've been nice, yeah.
Yep.
Or this person, the, how would it affect the CD charts?
So we talked about that, so, like I said, she would have to sit where Rhonda's at. We would move Rhonda to Karen's office just so she has that window and could be the backup, because, you know, there's nobody here. You know, if she comes until nine, or she or he, I should say.
Say whatever she is.
I know, she or he, I got it. So, you know, Rhonda will be able to cover when that person isn't sitting there. Probably move Karen to my office, because Rhonda's not here all the time, I mean, sick of vacation or whatnot. And she'll need to have that line of sight to see who comes in. And then I would, easiest though, without putting any walls up or whatnot, move to the sheriff's office. We're putting Damien in the small. That's what you guys are doing a good job.
Well, you said you got a different car, right? You got a different. I'm just kidding.
They're not here, they're often in smaller desks, so that would be the easiest way to shift around without having to put up walls or, you know, partial walls or if they're too much. We could pretty much leave the desks where they are, it's just shifting the people, because I mean, they can still use the front furniture. The only thing we probably have to, and we do have in supplies office furniture, is probably one more desk for mine, just because he's got a really small TV desk in there that I don't think I will be able to get by with.
Does the conference room ever be used?
Yeah.
For what?
Well, I mean, that's where all our files are and our copy areas, I mean, that's where we moved all our supplies, our break room is, and, I mean, we.
I mean, I have it probably twice a day, look at, have plans.
And I mean, that was a thought, did we split that in half, but then, you know, either a permanent or even a temporary wall, and just, I don't know how effective that would be for private meetings, you know?
Sounds like you got it figured out, I'm good.
Yeah, so, so we think we can, yeah, work it logistically here, so.
I'll make a motion to approve advertising, job description and taking application for the part-time office assistant. Second. Discussion. And then? Randall?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yep.
Keel?
Yes.
And Monahan.
Yes.
All right, good deal. And next we got, review approved, the city attorney's contract out there.
So really no changes to the contract, the same verbiage, same hourly rate. The only thing I noted in there that the mileage changed slightly, and even that's a little different.
It's fifty-six this year.
Yeah, he's got point five, fifty-seven and a half cents a mile, and actually it's fifty-six. So Tom said they would change that to the IRS rate for that. Hope to make that change, but I've got everything else, so, same thing.
We even might get Larry out of his attic sometimes, just shoot him come back and say hello, so.
Oh, yeah.
The vaccine never gets through, but.
Worked out good for his retirement then, didn't it?
I haven't seen him but about twice since March, so.
Only from here.
Still think about going to Pier, been a little nervous about session, so.
Want to approve the agreement with the city attorney I presented with the modification, the mileage rate.
All right. All right, discussion. Brennan?
Yes.
Jones?
Yep.
Randall?
Yes.
O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
And Monahan.
Yes.
All right, that's good. If we have anything for correspondence, I don't think I know. We do need a motion to move into a session for legal and personnel.
So moved.
Take it. All right, Randall? Okay, so that's his exit. Randall? O'Hara?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yep.
Monahan? There you go.
I can view you, yeah.
Back here, see you.
Yep, see you.
Come here.
Yep.